Our executive session was held to discuss personnel. We'll. Okay. You all received your work session. Agenda in the mail. And are there any additions or omissions to the work session? Okay, with that, we'll move on to the regular meeting. I say November tenth, twenty twenty one.
Mrs. Cassatt.
Here.
DeBaskis.
Here.
Mr. Dussinger.
Yeah.
Mr. Evans.
Yeah.
Mr. Fender. Mr. Kamis.
Here.
Mr. Majer.
Here.
Mr. Pizitz.
Here.
Mr. Yousavich.
Here.
Okay, we'll have a moment of silence followed by a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. A nation under God, invincible, liberated, and just as for all.
Student representatives, Ben Bowen and Jacob. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself here. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular October meeting.
Say it.
Okay. Student representatives, Ben Bowen and Jacob Nabrock.
Oh. On behalf of Mr. Schultes and Mrs. Crossen, congratulations to the senior spotlight, the senior Spartan Spotlight recipients for the month of October. The following seniors were selected by their teachers for exemplifying honorable qualities beyond that of the typical student. Those selected demonstrate strong academic, athletic, and personal skills that show off what we strive to be as Spartans. In addition to receiving a certificate, recipients will have their bios and accomplishments posted on the high school website and sent to the newspaper for recognition. The following are the esteemed Spartan Spotlight selections. Fantic, Fanticheve, Nicholas Rousseau, Brandy Varner, and Annabelle Wojcikowski. On behalf of the entire Wyoming Valley West High School, congratulations on this impressive accomplishment. The high school administration would also like to acknowledge this year's accomplishments of all our sport, of all of our fall sports teams. The girls varsity soccer team won the district two A, class four A runner up. Earned the runner up title. The varsity football team won the district two, class five A championship. Senior Nick Rousseau represented the district in the state cross-country championships. And all other fall sports teams qualified for postseason play. Nice job to all of our fall athletes. Today, the high school honored our nation's veterans. Within assembly on Wednesday, November tenth, the assembly took paid, took place in our auditorium and featured thank you messages and veterans and Veterans Day related information as presented by administration, students, and staff. The Wyoming Valley West marching band and choir also performed as a tribute to these brave individuals. Due to distancing protocols, the event was recorded and will be posted to the high school website in addition to being sent out to classes to view this Friday. On behalf of the entire high school faculty, staff, and student body, thank you to all veterans for their sacrifice and service to our great nation. Parent teacher conferences will take place at the high school next Monday, November fifteenth. Conferences will be held during two sessions, twelve to two thirty and six to eight. A memo has been sent home with students this week. That memo can also be found on the high school website. Student guides will be on hand to assist with navigating the high school as needed.
Members of the student council and the marching band will be, will be participating in a Veterans Day ceremony at the Legion in Plymouth tomorrow. The class of twenty twenty three is selling ugly holiday sweatshirts to offset the cost of future events. School will be closed for Thanksgiving recess from November twenty fifth to the twenty ninth. School, school will resume on November thirtieth. The SAT was held at Wyoming Valley West High School on Saturday, November sixth. The next date for the SAT is December fourth. Students interested in taking the SAT should register at W V W S A T dot org. Annabelle Wojcikowski and Aiden Golightly were crowned Miss and Mr. Sparta at the homecoming game. Wendlin Langley and Brian Gill were named runner ups. The fall drama, The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Nighttime, will run on November twelfth and thirteenth at seven thirty PM. And on Sunday, November fourteenth at one thirty PM. Tickets will be sold at the door. Cost is five dollars for students and eight dollars for adults. The student council mem, student council members will be assisting with the Warrior Tree Project on November twentieth and twenty first at Veterans Park on the corner of Main Street and Church Street in Edwardsville. The event honors individuals serving in the military who cannot be home during the holiday season. The event features a parade, the lighting of a warrior tree, light refreshments, speeches by local veterans and military servicemen, and a visit from Sergeant Santa.
Thank you.
They win the best dressed award again this month. Good job. Okay. Superintendent comments.
Thank you, Mr. Majer. On behalf of the entire Wyoming Valley West School District, I'd like to again thank Pediatrics Associates of Kingston and all their healthcare workers for facilitating the administration of the Pfizer vaccine this past Saturday and Sunday here at the middle school. The staff at Pediatric Associates was extremely professional and did a great job giving the vaccine, especially to some of our younger, more hesitant children. At last count, over seven hundred students were vaccinated here at the middle school this past weekend. As mentioned, this Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, we will have parent teacher conferences in the district. Parents may attend the high school Monday from twelve to two thirty and six to eight at night. The high school will operate on an active eighty day schedule on Monday with dismissal at ten thirty. Parent teacher conferences here at the middle school on Tuesday. Parents may attend from twelve thirty to three, or again, six to eight at night. And the middle school will operate on an act eighty day schedule on Tuesday with dismissal at eleven twenty. All elementary schools will have their parent teacher conferences on Wednesday. Parents may call on the five elementary buildings from one to three thirty in the afternoon, or again, six to eight at night, and all elementary students will be on the act eighty day schedule Wednesday with a noon dismissal. On the middle school level this past weekend, Lori Tilger, a teacher here at the middle school, delivered five thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-seven boxes of healthy snacks for soldiers serving overseas and three hundred letters and cards of support. In the three years, the middle school students have raised fourteen thousand dollars in the Sneakers for Soldiers program, and it truly an amazing accomplishment. Thank you to all the students and teachers who continue to make us proud. Also along the middle school level, they recently held elections for officers in conjunction with General Election Day. Now elected are President Molly Dussler, Vice President Billy Bell, Secretary Emily Boland, and Treasurer Ariel Chu. Congratulations to the officers. On the high school level, just a shout out to Senior Alex Zira for his article that was published in today's Citizens Voice. Every Wednesday, they run a local students column, and Alex submitted the article that was submitted for today. And I also want to note a big thanks to Mr. Schultes, the principal, and Assistant Principal, Mrs. Crossen. I had the honor and privilege of being part of the Veterans Day ceremony today. And between the music department up there, the student council, the administration, the faculty and staff, they did an absolutely tremendous job honoring our veterans. So congratulations. Wyoming Valley West Dana Elementary School has partnered with Fork Over Love to honor veterans. Fork Over Love is a nonprofit organization that aims to support independent restaurants while feeding the community. On Tuesday, they distributed five hundred meals to veterans and families to thank them for their service. Two hundred and fifty meals were distributed via drive-in to the Wooksberry VA Medical Center, and two hundred and fifty were dropped off at American Legion Post. And in addition to the meals, veterans receive red, white, and blue thank you cookies and cards and letters from students at Dana Street Elementary School in Forty Fort. The hundreds of cards created by the students contain meaningful messages of all the veterans with thanks for helping to meet, keep America safe. And along those lines, finally, on behalf of the Board of Education, the faculty, the staff, the students of the Wyoming Valley West School District, I would like to wish all our veterans, both past and present, a happy Veterans Day tomorrow. We thank you for your service and protecting our freedom. And as I said on Sunday night's robo-call, not only should we thank the veterans, the military this Veterans Day, but we should resolve to thank them throughout the year for the vital service they perform for our country. Thank you, Mr. Majer.
Thank you, Mr. Tosh. Statements from interested citizens. Citizens addressing the board are asked to state their name and town residence in accordance with Board Policy nine oh three. Statements are limited to three minutes.
Mr. Majer, may I have just one second before?
Yes, yes, you may.
So, as many of you know, the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania issued this decision today, which overruled the mask mandate issued by the health governor. It's been said, the governor has declared that they will be filing an appeal. While that appeal is pending, there'll be a stay regarding the Commonwealth Court's decision. And so the mask mandate will still be in effect. Until that legal challenge is all resolved, the school board is going to continue to follow the law and follow the mask mandate, but will immediately revisit that issue as soon as the legal challenges are resolved or if the mask mandate will be lifted in January, as the governor has already stated. So knowing that, when you all are coming up to, to give your, your, your statements, please keep that in mind as you go. Thank you.
Good evening, Wyoming Valley West Board members, administrators, fellow parents. My name is James Baldwin. I'm from West Wyoming. I have a son within the school district. Tonight, I'd like to make a request from the Board of Education to make teaching of our founding documents a priority in our schools from the youngest of our kids until they graduate. Tomorrow, we celebrate Veterans Day, and I want to acknowledge this school and the district for everything that is being done in recognition of our veterans. Tonight, you spoke, and I heard on the robo-call a couple of weeks ago where you mentioned the, this particular school, social studies department, and the family consumer science teacher remembering our veterans. As you reiterated tonight about the, the money that was raised for the Sneakers for Charity event for our veterans, as well as the number of snacks collected and thoughtful letters being sent to our brave brothers and sisters overseas, that really shows a lot. And I just want to acknowledge that there's some great things happening in this district. This shows the patriotism that is so important in these very divisive times in our country's history. As a parent with a child in the school district, I'm very grateful that our district is reminding our kids not to forget those defending our great nation. In recent years, I've heard more and more about younger Americans having a hate for our country for various reasons, such as systematic racism, patriarchy, and problems with the current capitalistic system. While most sensible people can acknowledge that our country isn't perfect, we can't and shouldn't focus primarily on our shortfalls. We can always work on ways to improve, but it needs to come slowly with great thought. Because right now, our society is changing rapidly, and we need to consider any consequences of our actions. Despite any flaws our country has, it is still the greatest example of freedom that this planet has ever seen. Many of our forefathers have risked or gave their lives to give us a government system that is for the people and by the people. A government that acknowledges that it's the government's job to protect the rights of people that were given to every one of us by God, our Creator. At no other time in history has there ever been a country where the power was acknowledged as being in the hands of the people and not solely in the power of the hands of the rulers. It is only when people recognize how unique our country is that people will recognize when there's a problem and come to its defense when its core values are being attacked. Back on nine eleven, two thousand and one, every, our country was attacked, and everyone in this room is old enough to remember how united our country became that day. We need to bring our country back together and our communities back together by remembering the core values of our country, by giving back, by going back to our founding documents. We need to start in our schools. I ask this board tonight, if you can make a commitment to our veterans, our students, and our great country to ensure that every student who graduates from Wyoming Valley West School District will have a strong understanding of the Constitution of the United States of America and the Declaration of Independence so that they can speak up and say, they are proud to be Americans. These are our founding documents, and it's only when our young people know the value of the words written on those documents that they can begin to appreciate what makes being a United States citizen so special. I like to end these remarks tonight with a quote that's actually engraved on the back of this school building. Government of the people, by the people, for the people, shall not perish from the earth. That's by Abraham Lincoln. I'd like to thank you all for your time this evening, and to please consider my request. I have at least one suggestion. It will be feasible to try to bring forth without interrupting the curriculum for our students if you're interested. But again, I appreciate your time tonight and everything you're doing for our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi again, it's Amy Carosa from Forty Fort. I just saw that on the agenda today that you would be approving an update to the Health and Safety Plan to reflect the new attendance codes for the state. So I pulled up the Health and Safety Plan, and I noticed on the first page that it said that the Health and Safety Plan should be tailored to the unique needs of each LEA, which is the local education agency and its schools, and it must take into account public comment related to the development of and subsequent revisions to the Health and Safety Plan. So I am just asking, have you taken into account the public comment that's related to the Health and Safety Plan before your revisions?
And they?
She was referring to the masking. Remember, if you remember back in August, we originally were going to have mask optional nine through twelve, mandated K through eight. And then as cases increased, we went updated our plan in that next board meeting. Right now, we can't do anything until this is through the courts. But when we look at, you know, every month, we've now updated the plan to reflect everything, we'll update it again when this falls through the courts, and we could then, you know, decide on how we want to move forward with that. But this has been.
The, the Health and Safety Plan, though, that is, that is online right now on the Wyoming Valley West School District page is from July, and it still says that students and staff will not be required to wear masks or face coverings. So I don't, I don't know what the version was where it said they would be required. I saw the one that's attached to the agenda, and it now says that students will be required to wear masks. But I'm wondering now, in light of the, the court case and the appeal, should it not be perhaps before it's voted on, include some type of notification about maybe the January seventeenth deadline? Or maybe in regards to what the courts find out, like, because right now, it's just saying that it's going to, that students will be required to wear masks or face coverings during the school day. Masks are also required on school transportation. All staff will be required to wear masks in school buildings. And all it says is that the superintendent will update weekly. There's no end date. There's no parameters that say how it's going to be looked at. I think in light of everything that's going on in the courts and the appeal, we should consider putting some type of wording that this could be subject to change.
Can I just say, we'll update all that, but one of the things that you have to understand is obviously the governor's mandate was just very recent. But this afternoon, and I said to the board in our other section, from probably two o'clock to four o'clock, we were scrambling, as most school districts were. We went on to a intermediate unit eighteen emergency Zoom meeting with every superintendent from the area. And I believe it was at three thirty-two this afternoon that the Secretary of Education came out with the latest ruling. So in terms of us getting everything together and updated, while I appreciate your concern.
Well, no, and I totally understand that too, but I think that you should hold off then and approving this today. It's never been in the agenda before that you were approving it.
Right, students will be required to wear masks. That's, that's the one that.
But this isn't, this isn't on the website, though.
Yes, it is. Remember, I sent you the link in the email.
You sent me the link in the email, but this is the one that's, this was on the one up until this, this agenda was sent to me. This is the one that is on there from July.
Oh, well, it's because it's always in the agenda, so we.
But it's not on the website if somebody wants to look at the.
Well, it might not have been updated where, under.
But it hasn't been updated since July, and you said it was updated in August.
It was, we updated, if you go back.
But I don't have any, I, how do.
It's in every board minutes, every.
I wouldn't, how would anyone know to look at the board minutes? I'm just saying, I'm thinking that you should hold off on approving something where it says it's, will be required, and, and in light of everything that's going on, why would you approve it if we still know that it's up in the air? Because the one that's on the website says it's, it's not, that it's not required. That's, that's all. I'm, I'm just saying, it doesn't match up. Well, now that we know the January seventeenth date is there, can we at least update that for that? Why can't we put it in there now? There's other school districts that say that it will be assessed depending on, right now, the way it stands, it's acting like there's no end date and that there is no way it's going to change. All it says is superintendent will update weekly, but it doesn't say what the superintendent is using to update weekly. Well, I'm just asking if we could include maybe the January seventeenth date.
Thank you for your question.
Hi, my name is Amy Craig, and I currently have two children in the school district. First, I want to say that up until this year, I was a bit, a big advocate of the district. I'm speaking tonight to bring some concerns to all your attention because I believe that you are not aware of them. If you're not aware of them, then you cannot fix them. My first issue is with an incident that happened, which ended with my sixth grader in ISS. Long story short, he was trying to get someone's attention in an out of control art class, and he pushed a child's chair. The child was on two legs instead of four, and the child fell backwards. The child went to the nurse, then went back and continued his day without leaving the school, which would make me believe he was okay. My child was called to the vice principal's office and told to come home and tell me he was getting ISS. I never received a call until after I actually called and left a message for the vice principal to call me. On the return call, I was completely, I had completely agreed that my son was wrong for pushing the chair and asked if there might be a lighter punishment, because technically, both boys were in the wrong because the other was sitting on two legs, and it was an accident. I was told they used to have children sit alone at lunch as a punishment, but they do that already every single day, so they can no longer use that. After trying to explain my concerns, I was yelled at by the vice principal because he makes the rules and punishments, and that ended with him telling me to come to the board and talk to you guys. And he was not going to continue talking to me because the conversation had already gone on for too long. The conversation was seven minutes long on my cell phone. This individual was completely unprofessional, would not listen to a word I said, never listened to my son's side of the story. He spent the entire time with my son in his, in his office, telling him how disappointed he was at him because he had good grades and he was a Dana student. I really have no idea why, what, where my child went to elementary school had any difference to do with my son or how he acts in the middle school. I don't know why Dana Street was brought up whatsoever unless Dana is being held to a different accountability than these other elementary schools in the district. Um, anyways, my son then sat in ISS, was done with his work in two hours, because it's just Google Classroom, sat doing classwork in the ISS room during the entire lockdown drill, where they did absolutely nothing for the lockdown drill. They didn't change anything. They didn't tell them what to do. They all sat there completely working. So they did nothing to protect themselves, and he lost an entire day of learning because of this. On that note, I will finish up this concern with the same day that my son received ISS, he also brought home a student of the month packet. So first of all, my, my concerns with this is how the vice principal talks to people. Second, how there's no other option for any type of punishment for anybody except for ISS, which is then going in every single person's folder, whether it's an accident, whether it wasn't meant to happen, whatever. My son did what he, he did the ISS. He, he did what he had to do, but that was my first concern. My second concern is, I was brought to my attention that daily, there are students sitting in this auditorium for one, two, sometimes three or more periods a day because they have no teachers. All three grades are mixed in there, doing tests and basically doing Google classwork, roomwork, while they're being supervised by one or two teachers on their breaks. It should be no surprise that the teachers are burnt out, and it's only November. They are doing bathroom watch, hall watch, auditorium watch, and lunch watch on top of their classwork. I get this year is stressful for everyone again, but these students are here for an education, and something should be done so the teachers can give them that. Lastly, as a school district, there should be more communication regarding all aspects of the school. I searched the entire web page, called three different people, left a voice message two days ago to simply find out if middle school basketball conditioning started that day. Not one single person at the office, central office, had any idea, and no information was posted on the webpage either. You can't build a good school morale if no one knows what's going on. On a better note, I do want to applaud Mr. Dicton, PAC Pediatrics, and anyone else involved in the COVID vaccine clinic last year, or last weekend. It was very well organized and ran perfectly.
Amy, can I just address a couple of things with it?
Yes.
If, if you want to call me tomorrow regarding the first issue, we can have a conversation about that. The second part, I will tell you, we are struggling, as most school districts are, and I'm telling you, it's not an excuse. It's not exclusive to Wyoming Valley West.
Oh, I understand that.
The, the amount of substitutes, when I started in this district in nineteen ninety-eight, I think we had seventy-four substitutes. We have about twenty right now, and.
And out of those 20 subs, probably 15 are already assigned to buildings like long-term for maybe an illness, maybe teachers on maternity. Now, the amount of subs are so few and far between that we are, you're 100% right. We're pulling teachers and I give them a lot of credit. They're doing a great job. We're pulling them in 100 different directions. But putting the kids in the auditorium, we're trying to do the best we can with either an assignment on Google Classroom or a paper assignment. And I wish it wasn't like that. I wish it was like the old days where you had sub after sub. We've reached out to King's College and a couple of local, Wilkes College and a couple of other ones. We're trying to work some things out for the second part of the year that when the education majors reach their student teaching and have hit all of the criteria that we could potentially get them in a sub. But substitute teaching is, it's a real issue and it's something we're trying to rectify.
No, I do understand that. Just to bring you up to speed on that as well, my son was in here for a math class with the other classes in this lighting with an orchestra practicing on the stage and did a math test. My kid's grades are, he never gets below an A. He got a 70 on this math test.
Yeah, and I would hope that we wouldn't be giving tests in here like that. But again, I do share your concern and it's something that we talk about on a daily basis. We're trying to come up with the most creative ways to do it, but I think we get into a certain situation where if you just don't have physical bodies and you.
No, and I understand that. That's everywhere. I do understand.
It's hard.
I do understand that. My concern is, I mean, my child took a test. His grade dropped from a 96 to a 94, his last test of the marking period, simply because he was sitting in here, couldn't concentrate, had no idea. You know, it was very loud. You know, it's just not, it's not ideal for anybody. So they shouldn't be having tests or anything like that. I did actually email the teacher and told her.
I compliment you that if his lowest grade is a 94, he's a pretty good student.
Well, and that's the thing. I mean, we're trying, but it's also a big, you know, a big jump for a sixth grader to come here in this time as well. So I appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think you need to look into that, Mr. Tosh, as far as doing testing in here with the orchestra practicing. I just don't understand how that happens.
Good afternoon, evening. My name is Jessica Maracto and I live in Ward 6. I want to tell you that I've been very disappointed in some of the behavior of the board. You pay no attention to anybody that's up here. You roll your eyes. Oh, by the way, I need to know the law number for the mandates because a man is just two men on a date. It means nothing. So I need the law number. Where it is a law, an executive order has not even been issued by the president. You know what's going on. You know you have to cater to certain groups or whatever. My concern tonight is CRT SEL in our district. Yes?
What?
No?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
CRT. Are you teaching critical race theory in our school? I'll investigate. I'll find out. I will find out, but I want to know, do you know, Mr. Tosh?
We're teaching the curriculum that we've always taught.
What is it? I don't see no books coming home with my niece. I do not know what's going on in the class. And when I go to school, teachers, the books are over here. They look like they're from 1972. So what is the teacher teaching?
That was one of the reasons that we purchased the Chromebooks so that we don't have to spend.
Okay, I'm glad you brought the Chromebooks up. My niece did a test for her social studies and it was online and they had to answer these political questions about abortion, about homosexuality. She's 14 years old. She doesn't need to answer these questions. At the end of the survey, you push the submit button. She said the teacher doesn't see it. So where did this submission of political questions go to? Didn't go to the school. Where did it go? Teacher Union, Republican, Democrat Party? Where did those answers go to? Who is watching our children and what they believe?
Do you know what? I don't have any idea what that is.
You just pull up one of the kids' Chromebooks in their social studies. They'll take you to a test and this test will ask you. And at the end, it will tell you what political party you are in. If you're a socialist, a Republican, a Democrat, every student in that high school building took it. Every high school student took that exam. Where did those questions go to? Who knows what our students are believing and what they're doing? Yes, it is a fact. I did the exam myself and I submitted it. So where did it go? If none of you have it, none of the teachers have it. Who has it? My other question is, what are you doing about the violence in the high school and the middle school? I live only two blocks away. I hear the fighting. I hear the screaming. I hear the yelling and they tell me it's worse in this building. You've got parents here that will be more than happy to come in and patrol these halls. My niece got sucker punched by two of your football players where I had to go and get her face x-ray and her head x-ray for a brain bleed. The violence has to stop. You might not make news like Wilkes-Barre just did, but this has got to stop. You've got to bring the parents in, let the parents discipline these kids. Sit down. That's all you got to tell a kid. Sit down. Now, these boys got suspended for 11 days. That means second violation. And you know what? It was only two weeks into our school that they punched her. The police just called me and they said they saw the video. They're being charged with simple assault. Now, my niece, she got suspended for three days because she tried to defend herself. And she was told you could have got up and walked away. Is that what we're going to tell our girls? It's okay to get punched, walk away, not to defend yourself? How do I justify punishing her for getting suspended for three days for fighting when she was just defending herself? I came from abusive marriage and I will not let her take a punch and not stand up and defend herself. Take care of our business.
Thank you. Okay, if there isn't anyone else, we will move on. General recommended action, I need a motion.
So moved.
All roll.
Yes.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Majer?
Yes.
Mr. Pizensky? Mr. Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Cassatt?
Yes.
Mr. Debaskis?
Yes.
Mr. Dussinger?
Yes.
Hey, Staff Recommended Action, I need a motion.
So moved.
All roll.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Majer?
Yes.
Mr. Pizensky? Mr. Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Cassatt?
Yes.
Mr. Debaskis?
Yes.
Mr. Dussinger?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Hey, Finance Recommended Action, I need a motion.
So moved.
All roll.
Mr. Canis?
Yes.
Mr. Majer?
Yes.
Mr. Pizensky?
Yes.
Mr. Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Cassatt?
Yes.
Mr. Debaskis?
Yes.
Mr. Dussinger?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Hey, Board Member Comments?
You know what, Mr. Majer, I'd just like to echo the compliments for the high school, for the program they put on for the veterans. As a veteran, it is greatly appreciated. Specifically, I'd like to mention just two gentlemen, students that were involved in it, Logan Romanowski and Ben Bowden, who was our speaker up there. Both of those young men are over 4.0 students and both applied to military academies. They have a huge, bright future in front of them. So I realize we're not perfect, but somehow we succeed on some of these kids. So great job of the high school. Thank you very much for that.
Okay, anyone else? Next scheduled meeting is December 1st. That's reorganization. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.